Good morning. Good morning. This is the day that the Lord has made.
Amen.
We shall rejoice and be glad in it. Amen. God is great and greatly to be praised. Is there a witness in the house today? God is great and he is greatly to be praised. Come on, somebody, and bless the Lord today. Come on and bless the Lord. Hallelujah. If we're still upright and we still have all the necessities and we are clothed in our right mind, hallelujah, bless the Lord today. I thank God that he's a keeper. I don't know about you, but I thank God that he's a keeper and he's been keeping me and my family throughout all of the things that have been going on. So we have come for no other reason today than to bless the Lord. I want to let you know that we're going to do something a little different today. I'm not usually standing up here at this point. Usually the praise team is going, but I wanted to just let you know we're doing something a little bit different today. Our mission statement from Mount Olive Baptist Church is that "We exist to make the love of Jesus Christ real and relevant throughout Washington County and the world by seeking the lost, discipling the saved, and equipping the body of Christ for ministry." And I believe we touch on at least one, if not all three of those every Sunday that we come together. I really believe that. But today, we're going to do something a little bit differently. We're going to equip the body for ministry and disciple the saved by way of a conversation. It's a good thing every once in a while to have a conversation about the real and relevant issues that we are facing in the world today. So as you can see behind me, the area is set up very differently. And so we will have a young lady, Sister Keisha Muhammad, will come forward at the time that we ask her to and we will have a question and answer session. Well, we're going to talk about some of the concerns today and we're going to answer them biblically. How does the believer respond to what's going on in the world today? How does the church respond to what's going on in the world today? And so we solicit your prayers as we unpack some of the complicated things that we haven't had frank discussions about. At least at this church, we haven't had frank discussions. We've spent a lot of time praying and we've had discussions in other forums, but in this particular forum, we have not had peeling the layers of the onion off of the questions so that we can be real and relevant about the concerns. During the course of the time that we're doing question and answer, we do invite you to not just listen, but to also submit questions. If you have questions that you need to be answered based on what's going on in the world today, we asked that you would submit them right on the Facebook Live platform and we will have our own Sister Letitia Gilbert will be taking those questions and intermittently, we will be stopping to see if there is a question from those that are viewing us on Comcast or on Facebook. God bless you today. Go with us as we try to do something different to keep you engaged and to really speak to the concerns. Amen? Amen. God is good. He's all in it. He's all in it. Don't worry. It's, I know it's not the traditional thing to do, but God is all in this thing. Amen. And so I'm going to offer a word of prayer and then I'm going to ask Minister Corey to lead the praise team in a song of praise because we want the atmosphere to be filled with praise unto God that God might make his presence known, amen, and might guide the conversation. Amen, amen. So let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you today once again to say thank you. I thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be before you again. I thank you for the opportunity to share your truth with a, during a time where things are very confusing and very unsettling, Lord, but we know that even though the times are not settled, you're still settled. You're still on the throne. You still reign supreme and you are still sovereign. And so we're able to have a smile on our face no matter what's going on in the world today because of the joy of Jesus that lives inside of us. And Lord, we want to say thank you for the joy of Jesus Christ. Hallelujah. And so, God, I just pray that our praise is acceptable unto you today, that our worship is acceptable unto you and that you would guide the conversation that we're going to have. I pray for the people on the other side of the camera, those that are joining us by Facebook, those that are joining us by Comcast, that they would be blessed by this exchange that we have today and that you would just meet their every need, even right now in their homes, according to what you have for their life, God. We, Father, we love you, we thank you, and we bless you. We give this hour over to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. Minister Corey.
Amen.
Good morning, Pastor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mount Olive and friends. First Pastor, I just want to take the time to thank you for the opportunity to have this format to share with and engage the church body with a biblical context in these unprecedented times. We have a pandemic with COVID-19, social unrest escalating in terms of racism, and a political climate that seems to be stoking these fires on a daily basis. There's apathy in the black community concerning all of these areas as we are disproportionately affected by these issues. So to be clear, you know, we're going to have this dialogue coming from the biblical perspective and how believers should respond because these situations, as it's appropriate for all of us. So with that in mind, let's just jump right into the questions.
All right.
All right. And so, as we said, for those joining us Facebook Live, we want to make this interactive. So please send us your questions and we'll try to get to them as best we can. First, Pastor, what are your thoughts when people say that God has caused this pandemic?
Well, I have mixed thoughts about that. Those of you that have been following us for the 17 weeks that we have been on Facebook Live know that I have never chosen a side in that debate because I'm not sure that it's really overwhelmingly relevant. There are those who would say that God has brought this on in order for us to give our undivided attention to him. There are those that would say that. And then there are those who would say, "God is a God of love." Who would never do that. Well, to those that say God is only a God of love and only a God of mercy and would never do that, I would ask that you please go back to the Old Testament and you will find that God has indeed, many times, has bought difficult situations, even on his own children because of their disobedience. Nevertheless, because I don't know the full heart of God concerning this pandemic, I am not prepared to jump into the bandwagon that says this is all God. But what I am prepared to say, and I believe this is backed up in Scripture, is that even if God did not send this, he has certainly allowed it. Amen? And to say otherwise is to say that God is not sovereign. So either we believe God is sovereign and God is omnipotent and God has all power, which is what omnipotent means, or we don't believe those things. But if we do believe he's sovereign and that he is omnipotent, then he could have stopped it had he chosen to. And so while I don't jump into either bandwagon as to whether or not God caused it or it came from the enemy, I certainly know that God allowed it to happen and he's allowed it to happen for a purpose that perhaps we don't know just yet, but it's ultimately for his honor and for his glory. And if we springboard from that way of thinking, then we're able to stay out of the fray of the debate and we're able to just honor God because, God, I believe you're going to bring us out. Hallelujah. I just believe you're the authority and you're going to bring us through and you're going to work it for our good and for your glory. Oh, my goodness. I'm trying not to preach up here already. Amen. Amen. So that would be my answer to that.
All right now. All right. Now, following up on that point, where have you seen God move during this pandemic? And what are some of the lessons you believe God is allowing us to learn as a result of it?
I think there's much to learn from this. So I'm just going to say a couple of things because I think there's much. And I think there is much that God is speaking to individual households. Really, I do believe that. But as a general statement, I believe that God is reminding even the church that he is sovereign. He's reminding even the church that he is still the authority and that he reigns supreme. I don't think it's a coincidence that he has shut down everything that was competing with his attention on his day, on Sunday. I don't find it a coincidence that there is no NFL at this point. I know they're trying to make it happen, but I don't find it coincidence that every single thing that was competing with God on the Sabbath has been shut down. And so all that, all that has come up against honoring him is now in its proper place so that God can remind the church and remind the world that he is an authority. And so that's something that I don't think we should forget, even when things go back to a quasi-normal. We should never forget that God allowed this to happen and I believe personally that he might receive the attention that he and he alone deserves, not just on Sunday, but really every day of our lives. I think God has taught the church, how, this is my second thing, and then I'm going to stop talking. I think that God is teaching the church how to be more creative in ministry. I think that God is teaching the church. He's shaking up the church in this. I mean, he's not just shaking up the world. He is shaking up his church. We had a tendency to be behind those red doors and to become very, very comfortable. I say red doors because our doors are red. I don't know what color everybody else's doors are at their church, but we got very comfortable in here when God says, "Okay, well, if I shut this down, how are you going to do ministry? If I shut this down, you're forced to go out into the world and to share who he is in a way that's a little more creative than what we've done before." And so I think those are two big lessons, that God is sovereign and that the church needed to be shaken up, that we might be forced into a place of creativity to become a 21st century church.
Amen. Thank you. Tish, do we have any questions? Okay. All right. We're going to move into the next, next topic. And you talked about this a little bit last week in your sermon about what it means to be a good neighbor. But Pastor, you know, black people are tired, you know, and how we're being treated and the racism and lack of regard for black life. And how does the biblical principle get put into context in that time in terms of, you know, forgiving your neighbor 70 times seven? And that, and that particular principle, how are we supposed to just continue to forgive in this environment when we know that we're just not being treated fairly in this environment? What's your response to that 70 times seven forgiveness biblical principle?
Well, when Jesus was asked the question, "How often do I forgive?", he did answer 70 times seven. And most of us that have been in the church for a while know that that doesn't mean at 491, you get to stop forgiving. Amen? Because 70 times seven, 490, that's not what that means. But Jesus says we ought to have a forgiving spirit all of the time. I think to answer this question better requires really a full discussion on what forgiveness means. You know, so I'm just going to say a little bit here because it's really beyond the scope of what we're trying to do here. I do think the churches ought to unpack what forgiveness really means as we move forward. Forgiveness does not mean that we continue to let people harm us and abuse us. That's not what forgiveness means. Forgiveness means that when people are willing to offer us an olive branch, that we accept it and we accept it graciously and we believe them based on what they have, what they have said and what their actions have been. I believe that forgiveness is more about the individual who's been hurt. It's just as much about the individual who's been hurt as the one who has inflicted the injury. But when we hold on to things, then it doesn't allow us to see when there is an opportunity for forgiveness and for healing. When we hold on to it in a spirit of unforgiveness, it doesn't allow us to see the repair that God is trying to do even on a smaller scale than what we thought because there are some things that are happening on a small scale that would not have happened even five years ago that allow us to see that God is at work. There are conversations all over the country. There are people, you know, just for example, when we did, when we participated in the Black Lives Matter protest, there were more non-blacks there than blacks. Those that were there, you saw that. There were Asians there. There were more non-blacks there than there were black people. Well, you say, "Well, then, you know, we're, blacks in Cannonsburg are a very small percentage." And that's very true. But the fact that there were so many people that didn't look like us that were there tells me that there are people that are standing with us and agree with us and want there to be racial equality. But if we hold on to unforgiveness all the time, we'll miss that. We'll be angry. We'll miss what God is actually doing, even if it's not on the grandiose scale that we think it ought to be. God is at work, people of God. God is at work all across this country. And we just need to trust him and believe what we see and hold on to that God, God is doing what only God can do. We cannot change the heart of man. We'd like to be able to do that, but we can't do that. But God surely can. And I believe that that's happening throughout our country. People are listening to us now. And so we've got to be on our game and we've got to speak our truth, but we've got to speak it in love and we've got to be willing to forgive when the olive branch is extended. And I believe in many areas that olive branch is being extended. Don't let the blatant racism overshadow the goodness that's coming out of it. There are some blatant racists. I'm not denying that. But don't allow that to overshadow what we saw on that day when we did that protest. Amen?
Amen, amen. Following up, talking about the Black Lives Matter protest, how should we respond to the Black Lives Matter organization versus Black Lives Matter as a concept? And is there a difference?
I think that depends on who you ask. I'm going to answer that that way. I think it depends on who you ask. There are people that, that I've had conversations with that when you say Black Lives Matter, get enraged because they automatically associate Black Lives Matter with rioting, looting, and many things that we've seen go on across the country. And there's a lot of discussion about whether or not that was really part of the protest versus people infiltrating from the outside to make that movement look like they are a terrorist group. I mean, we even have the President of the United States intending to call that movement terroristic. It's troubling. It's troubling. And so there is an organization that many people associate with something that frankly is not likely to be 100% true and may not be true at all. I don't know all the details on that. But there's also a group of people that when we say Black Lives Matter, I'm simply saying Black Lives Matter. I'm not necessarily saying that I'm aligned up with the organization. I'm not saying I'm not, but I'm not always saying that. I'm simply saying that black lives should be treated the same way as white lives, that there should be racial justice, that there should be equality, and that black lives should matter the same way white lives do. And I think that's what a lot of African-Americans mean when they say that. They may or may not be aligned with the organization. But guess what, guess what happens out of this? Is that in order for, to unpack that, you have to actually ask the person. You know, there's a lot of statements that are being made now in this tense environment that we're just assuming that people mean what we think they mean and we never actually ask them. Okay? And so if I say, you know, you know, "Black lives do matter" and somebody automatically assumes that I'm going to be the next terrorist, but they didn't even ask me. Well, what do you mean by that? Let's talk about that some more. I believe dialogue is where we're going to make inroads. We're not going to make it fighting each other constantly and assuming we know what people's hearts are. Dialogue is where this stuff comes unpacked. And at the end of the dialogue, each time I've had it, I've come to think very differently about the person on the other side of the table than I would have if I would have just assumed what I thought was true. We've got to have a dialogue. Got to have a dialogue, even if it's painful. This is uncomfortable stuff. This is hard stuff. And we're unearthing some things that have been buried for many, many years. And so it's not comfortable for us and it's not comfortable for the, for the people on the other side of the table. But we've got to have the dialogue or we're never going to get anywhere. I'm, I'm, I'm really strong about that. I really believe in that.
Now, in context of that, maybe that you've already answered with the dialogue, but in, how would we, should we respond when we go to the other extreme of the spectrum where black lives don't matter or as we've seen in recent days, blue lives matter?
I think whatever color your life is, you matter. I mean, I really, I mean, and I don't mean that trivially at all because if people get mad if we say black lives matter, then somebody responds with all lives matter. And, and I understand that. And I understand the pain that the African-American community feels when people say that because I feel it too. You know? We're the ones being harmed at this point in time. So, you know, let's identify that we are part of the all. Once you identify that we are part of the all, we can co-sign that. And so I truly get that. But whatever color our life is, our life matters. I happen to think that we have some of the finest police officers in, in anywhere in Cannonsburg. And so they're blue. That's what blue lives matter mean. Their life matters as well. I was astonished. I've been involved in two protests now, two marches, and only one of them had police officers walking with you, blocking off the road, helping you get through, making sure that everybody was safe, walking the entire route with you. And that was right here in this community. And so I think every blue life matters, every black lives matter. And I think to go back to what you were saying, how do we respond to that? With dialogue. If there's something that we're uncomfortable with in our community with police officers, there should be no reason why we cannot sit down with the leader of that community and the chief of police and say, "Let's have a dialogue about our concerns." If there's concerns in the community, there should be no reason. They're there to protect and to serve. And I'm thankful that in this community, we have a mayor who actually doesn't have a problem sitting down with us to have a conversation. We actually don't, we have a chief of police who has no problem sitting down with us to have a conversation about these difficult things and they do it regularly. And so, you know, blue lives matter, black lives matter. But if there's concerns, I think the dialogue is the way to go in order to, to understand each other in a better way. It's not one over the other, right? It's not one over the other. It's that if you're blue because you're a police officer, you matter. I'm African-American, I'm black, and I matter. And so let's sit down at the table and let's talk about it if there's a disparity.
Because that's when, when the, when the dialogue shuts down, that's when we really lose hope. So we really need to keep that conversation going. And there's been a lot of conversation going on this next question. All right? How should we? I know. Because this is, this is a big one, both in and outside of the black community. But how should we view the use of the N-word by both black and non-black people?
Well, the Scripture says that we ought to treat, we ought to treat everyone well. Okay? It says it in better terms than that. But clearly throughout the Bible, there's Scripture after Scripture after Scripture that says we ought to treat each other well and esteem each other better than ourselves. That's what Paul says in his letter. He says, "We ought to esteem each other better than ourselves." And so we know that the N-word is a very inflammatory word. It's a very disparaging word. It's a symbol of oppression. Truth be told, it's a symbol of oppression. I've had conversations with both sides of it. I've heard young brothers say that it's okay if they say it between each other. But then I've heard us of the next generation, who are not so young, be terribly offended by it. And so I'm just going to go based on Scripture and based on what I just said. Scripture says we ought to esteem each other better than ourselves and we know that that is a disparaging word. I am of the opinion, based on Scripture, that that word should be erased from vocabulary of all ethnicities. Because once we, once we allow it to be a safe place between two African-Americans, then we've changed the rules. We've changed the rules. Well, it's okay for us, but it's not okay for you. And we want to fight and we want to, you know, go crazy on people. But really, you can't have it both ways. If it's a disparaging word on the outside of the ethnicity, it's a disparaging word on the inside of the ethnicity. And I think that's a, that's a conversation that, you know, I think the African-American community has to have. You know, I think, I think there's two sets of conversations that we have to have here. I mean, some of you have heard me say this before. One is to come together with our Caucasian brothers and sisters and talk about how we feel about not being treated with equality and come to a place. But then there's an inside-the-family conversation that we need to have too. Amen? You know, most of you grew up in the same era that I did and mama used to always say, "What goes on in the family? Keep that conversation right here in the house." Amen? And so there's some inside-the-family, meaning the African-American community, conversations that we need to have also. conversations that we need to have also. That's just one of several things in my mind that we might just be together. We might be together on this concept.
All right, now, so...
Is that acceptable?
Absolutely. I think that's where we leave it in terms of making sure that there's not a double standard in terms of how we treat that word amongst our community and how we allow other people to use it towards us. So, I agree. We have a dialogue going on certainly face to face, but there's a lot of dialogue going on on social media, Facebook, Twitter, certainly as our president uses it as a platform for his political views and things like that. But in this racially charged environment, how should we engage in social media, both as believers and non-believers, but especially when we see that being used as a platform as a huge example by our president? But social media in general and how we should discuss things and use it and/or not use it to express our views?
We've been called out of darkness into His marvelous light. We are the called. Believers have been called out of darkness into His marvelous light. And so, that means that it's our responsibility to be a witness for the Lord Jesus Christ in every avenue of our life. And that includes on social media. Amen? That includes on, anything that would hamper our witness of the Lord Jesus Christ, we've got to be careful of. We've got to be very careful of. Just because the President of the United States uses Twitter to call out people, that's where, I'm just going to say this, that's where light and darkness disagree, okay? We don't call out people on Twitter. We don't call out people on Facebook. Facebook is a very, very powerful tool. I'm just realizing after being on it for only three years, how powerful it is. It can change the way people think. It shouldn't have that much power. Can I just say that? It should not have that much power. But yet, we have given it that much power. It's a platform that if it's in the right hands, is amazing because you can share the gospel. We're doing it right now by way of Facebook. So, I'm not going to say it's all bad, but in the hands of the wrong person, there's a problem. There's a problem. And so, I would say as believers, we need to make sure and, you know, ask God, "God, I'm getting ready to go on Facebook. Can you guard me and not tempt me to get involved in conversations that perpetuate the hate?" And believers do that. We do that. And, you know, because we're mad, we're angry, we're frustrated. You said something about my friend. You said something about my people. And without ever even having a dialogue again, again, I'm going back to dialogue with the person, we make an assumption based on something they posted on Facebook. We have no context, no context at all. But we make that assumption and we go back at the person. And before you know it, the whole town of Cannonsburg is going crazy because somebody delivered pizza without a face mask on. It just doesn't even, it doesn't even, it shouldn't be that way. And believers, we have to be very careful about being drawn into conversations that first of all, don't matter. Don't matter at all. Don't matter one bit. Don't change nothing, okay? And we have to be careful about that. If you're going to interject, do your best to interject something that's based on scripture. You don't have to always talk Jesus, but may it come from a heart of love and from a place of scripture, from a place of earnesty to bring people together and not to divide. I mean, we've got to be careful of that, okay? Because we're quick to do that. We're quick to do that. And if people are losing their jobs because of what they're putting on Facebook, a simple post on Facebook, you're fired the next day. What does that do to the body of Christ when we get on Facebook and we've been not a witness for Christ, but we've been putting out stuff that the world puts out? We've been called out of darkness into the marvelous light. And so, we should not be disparaging people on Facebook. We should not engage in conversations that beat down people, that perpetuate hate. We've got to figure out how to stay away from it. Maybe shut down the account for a little bit. Shut it down, shut it down. Because there's too many believers out there that are doing it, you know? And it's very easy to unfollow people and unfriend people and so forth because you want to love people. I mean, that's just the truth. I've unfollowed so many people on Facebook that are believers because I want to love you when I see you the next time. So, I don't want to know all that. I don't want to know all that. I want to love you and I want to be all right with you. But it shouldn't be that way. Believers bring light where darkness would otherwise prevail.
Amen, say it.
I'm going to leave it at that because I could go on forever about that, but I'm going to stop there.
Do we have any, Pastor, do we have any questions? All right, now, we're going to keep the conversation going. And really, this is sort of one to put a bow on this topic of racism and social unrest. What can we do to bring about change in our community during these unprecedented times as believers, as African Americans? But what should we be doing in the community to bring about change?
I believe the church has a place in social justice. I don't think I always believed that. I think I was always just good being behind the red doors, guilty, guilty, guilty. I don't want to get involved. Just let me talk about Jesus. I don't want to get involved because that's the easy way out. But God has been challenging me in my thinking on that lately. So, I believe the church does have a strong will. If you think about it, the civil rights movement was born in the church. Martin Luther King wasn't just doctor, he was a preacher. Amen? And so, this comes out of the people that loved the Lord Jesus Christ and wanted to honor God. And so, the church has a place in social justice. What can we as believers do to better our community? First of all, we can come to the table when the table is set. I'm going to say that again. We can come to the table when the table is set, okay? There will be times in the very near future where the table will be set. It's not that far away. I got an inside track for some of this, okay? Where the table will be set. Well, we will be inviting the community of Cannonsburg to come to the table and to talk about some of these things. And we cannot make change if we're sitting home doing, watching Jeopardy while the meeting is going on. You can't make change that way. It's not going to happen. And then, we can't the next day, get on Facebook and badmouth the whole thing because we just refuse to be at the table when the table was set, okay? And so, that's, you know, we've got to be engaged. We've got to get involved. If you live in Cannonsburg and you have problems with Cannon McMillan School District, find out when the school board meeting is. When is the school board meeting, okay? Yes, there are some rules to that. You can't just go and jump up and say things, but you can. There are some things that you can do. Call the president of the school board and ask, "What are the rules? Because I have a concern and I'd like to be there. My grandchild has a concern in school." Be there. When a vacancy comes empty on the school board, guess what? Somebody from Cannonsburg. If you want to see change towards African American children, then an African American person should find out when a vacancy comes. And if you're a resident of Cannonsburg... I'm a candidate for the school board. We've got to get involved. We've got to get engaged. There are other ways for us to be a presence in the school districts than to be a teacher that has or to have a degree in education. There are other ways. Guess what? I've talked to the Cannon McMillan School Superintendent. He told me there are other ways that we can get engaged and involved. If we want to see change, we have to be part of the solution and not just the one in the corner doing this here. I know I'm right about it. I know I'm right about it because I've seen what God, when God urged me to, you know, "Get engaged in this thing. Stop talking about it. Be about it." You know, because I sat in that seat where I was home watching Jeopardy saying, "Nope, nope, nope. God has called us for such a time as this." And so, when we come to the table, there are police officers. Everybody says we've only had two black police officers in our community in the whole history of Cannonsburg, and that's true. But guess what? Nobody else has applied either. Only those two in the history of Cannonsburg. Yes, I did ask that question. Two, and they both got hired. And so, there's a place if we want to make change in relationship between the police and the community. Young men, young ladies, there are female police officers. Let's find out. How can I become a police officer? Councilmen. There are councilwomen, councilmen. How can I become a councilman? What's the qualifications? How does this happen? We've got to ask questions and then be a part of the solution rather than just over in the corner. Like, as I said, when we went to the Black Lives Matter protest, there were many, many, many residents of Cannonsburg who I know are black who were not there. Maybe a lot of them were working, maybe not. We should have been there. If we want to change, you know, if we were not working, then we really should have been there. And so, it's one thing to complain. It's one thing to write your congressman. It's one thing. But if you get involved, you're making change from the inside. Your voice cannot be ignored when you're sitting at the table.
Amen, amen. I'm going to switch gears in one more time, one more time. And it's going to be, not to get political, but just to take it there. What should we as a community of believers do about our President, Mr. Trump, in relation to all these issues? Because he is at the forefront of the pandemic, the racism, the social media. What should we be doing with regard to that? And I think it sort of, you've touched on elements of it, but it really does come back to him.
Yeah, yeah. First of all, God in His permissive will allowed President Trump to become president. You can pretend that that didn't happen, but He could have stopped it. But He could have stopped him. But He allowed him to be president in the same way He allowed Nebuchadnezzar to be in charge of the nation of Israel for a season in Babylonian captivity. So, God has allowed this thing to happen. Whatever you feel about the president, it's been permitted to happen. And so, how do we respond? We pray for our president. I've had major discussions with believers who don't think we should be praying for our president because they dislike him that strongly. That's against the Word of God. Romans Chapter 13, go check it out. We ought to pray for people that are in authority. Amen? And so, we ought to be praying for our president. The second thing that, because God can turn a heart. Come on, somebody. Amen? The heart is deceitfully wicked, but God can turn a heart. If He turned a wretch like me, He can turn him as well. So, we ought to be praying for our president. We ought to be praying for our country. Amen? Even when Israel was in captivity in Babylon. Amen? Wasn't it Jeremiah that said, "Pray for Babylon?" Because Babylon's peace is your peace. And so, we ought to be praying for our president. We ought to be praying for our country. And in November, get to the polls. Get to the polls. If you feel that strongly about it, get to the polls or get your mail-in ballot. If you can't get to the polls, but work it out so that your vote gets put in place and that your vote counts. And those are the things that I would advise the church to do. Let's not keep hating on the president. Let's, you know, let's not keep talking about the president, okay? Let's go ahead and vote. Let's pray for him and let's pray for the nation. Amen? There's a lot of things that I disagree with also. I didn't vote for him in 2016 and I don't intend to in 2020. But that doesn't mean that we ought to disparage his character because then we're actually fighting the same thing he's fighting against us when we do that. God convicted me of that one too. He said, "Cut that out. Pray for the man. Cut that out."
All right, Pastor, we do have one question.
Oh, we do have a question.
Okay, rather than waiting for the dialogue to come to us, how can we be sure that the dialogue that needs to, is needed, continues? What should the church do outside of traditional services and events to keep that dialogue going?
Amen, amen. Well, this is a start, I think. I think this is a start that we, you know, we start the dialogue. There are people that are sitting at the table with the leadership of Cannonsburg. I can only handle Cannonsburg right now. But there are people in position of leadership in Cannonsburg who have been sitting down with us. There are preachers at the table. We open with prayer when we meet with the mayor and the chief of police and other people in leadership. And so, there's a dialogue that's going on and it will continue. And when it is the right time, when God says, "We will invite you to the table so you can be a part of the dialogue also." And so, it takes somebody fired up about the issues. It takes people fired up about the issues to lead the charge, to have the discussion, to bring it to the table, and then to invite the community to come and be a part of it. I'm not sure how other communities are doing it, but that's how we're doing it in the community of Cannonsburg. And it's painful. It's uncomfortable. I'm going to tell you that right now. It's painful and it's uncomfortable. But we need to have these dialogues and we need to keep them going. And we need to recognize that in the dialogue, you're going to get your feelings hurt. Yep. And you're going to walk out saying, "I ain't going back." But you're going back because the cause is too important. And so, we can keep it going by making sure we stay fired up about it, stay in tune. Each time that we have something like this, we will make sure that it is on our Facebook page. When it goes further with the leadership of Cannonsburg, we will make sure it's well-publicized. So, we keep it going by staying engaged. Keep asking questions. Keep having conversations with your neighbors. Keep, not just your children in your house. Keep having conversations with people that don't look like you. Amen? Pick up the phone and call a friend, somebody you work with. Say, "Hey, Susie Q, can we have a conversation?" It'd probably be a little uncomfortable, but I feel like we need to have a conversation. And that's when you begin to unpack some things and get to know this person in a different way. And you just might find that that person agrees with everything that you're saying and wants to stand with you. We will not win the fight against racism on our own. We've got to bring other people to the table. Obviously, we're praying. We're seeking the counsel of God. We're following His direction. But in practical terms, we need other people to come to the table to help us to achieve racial equality. And we just want to be treated the same. We're not asking to be better than everybody else. We just want to be treated the same, and that is God's order. Amen?
Amen, amen. Pastor, we touched on a few different topics this morning. And I want to thank you again for sharing your thoughts on them and how we can put this in a Christian and biblical context. I heard you say a few things. If I just could summarize, you know, we need to do our own research and not be led by a fake book and anything else. And let's educate ourselves before we start asking other people to get educated on our issues. Let's keep the dialogue and the conversation going because when we stop talking to each other, that's when things get worse. And then, equality is the ultimate goal. All lives matter, but ultimately, we're talking about black lives matter in the sense of equality. We want to be treated equally and fairly. And then, finally, if we want to bring about change in the community, we have to get involved and stay engaged at all levels.
Amen.
Amen? So, hopefully, the folks on Facebook and everyone here that got a little feeding and fed through the Word, this format, it was a little bit different, keeping everyone engaged. But we appreciate you, Pastor, and thank you for allowing us to have this time. to have this time.
Thank you. Amen. That's why we can make it through this life, because no one can do you like Jesus. Can't nobody do me like Jesus. Hallelujah. He deserves the honor, the glory, and praise in everything that we do and all of the issues that we talked about just a few moments ago. All of those issues, those issues, the predominant theme is that we've got to honor God, church. We've got to honor God in every avenue of our life. We've got to honor God and give Him the honor and glory and praise in the way that we respond to situations, in the way that we live our life, in the way that we navigate through this pandemic. We do not lean to our own understanding. Amen? Amen? But in all our ways, we must acknowledge our great God and wait on Him to direct our paths. Hallelujah. I thank God for today. At this moment in time, we are going to move into the Lord's Supper. You all know that typically on the first Sunday of the month, in Baptist tradition, we partake in the Lord's Supper, but because we thought we were gonna open last week and then it closed at the last minute because of the spike in cases, we did not want to take that away from the individuals who were not able to get their communion cups. And so we moved it to this Sunday so that those of you that are joining us from home could stop by and get your pre-filled communion cups. But I thank God. I thank God for this time of coming together. You know, it was on a Thursday. It was on a Thursday when Jesus got together with His disciples to partake in the Passover feast for the last time on this side of life. And when He was with them, the Bible says that He broke bread. And He said, "This is My body for you." Now, if He didn't go any further than that, that's powerful. This is My body. Here's Jesus, God incarnate, on His way to Calvary, on His way to let people nail hands, nail His hands to a cross and nail His feet to a cross. He let them put a crown of thorns on His head. And in anticipation of that coming, He says to His disciples at the last feast, "This is My body for you." Just let that sink in for a minute. And then the Bible says that when He took the cup and He supped, He said to them, saying, "This cup is the New Testament in My blood. This cup is the new covenant in My blood." Which means that we can come into covenant relationship with God by way of the blood. Hallelujah. How many of you thank God for the blood today? Come on, somebody, and thank God for the blood today. We did not have to clean our own selves up before we came to the cross of Calvary. We didn't have to have every T crossed and every I dotted and every nook and cranny filled in before we came to the cross. We just had to yield to the throne of Almighty God, and I thank God for that today. Because if it were left up to me, I'd still be a wreck. If it were left up to me, I would have remained unsaved and outside of a relationship with the only true and living God. But because of Jesus, because of the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ, because of the sacrifice of Jesus Christ, we now have privileged access to the throne. You talk about privilege. We have privileged access to the throne of God, and we should not take that lightly. Not any day. Not the first Sunday, not the second Sunday, not any day. We are to never take that lightly. And so I'm gonna ask if you would just bow your heads as we go before the throne of God. And we are going to ask God to bless the elements that we have before us, and we're gonna ask God to bless each and every one of you. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you today so thankful for this moment in time. We are grateful for this moment in time. We are grateful that we have been given the privilege of having access to your throne, God. We've been, we're grateful for that, and it's all because of the blood of Jesus. It has nothing to do with how great we are because truth be told, in all of our righteousness, we're still a pile of filthy rags in our own righteousness. But in the righteousness of Jesus Christ, we stand before you, Lord, and we stand before you as the righteousness of God, and we just want to say, "Thank you, Lord." And so, God, we ask that you would bless these elements. The bread that represents the body of your Son, Jesus Christ, that you would bless this grape juice that represents the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ on the cross of Calvary. We ask that you would bless everyone under the sound of my voice who will partake of this supper as we commemorate the sufferings of Jesus Christ. God, may we never forget the suffering. May we never forget the bloodshed. May we never forget the broken body that happened just for us, Lord. May we never forget that it's available to all humanity and that we carry the message of the cross. Hallelujah, God. Thank you for entrusting us with the message today. And God, if there's anything among us right now that is unconfessed, if there's any sin amongst those of us that will partake in the Lord's Supper, if there's any sin that we haven't confessed it, Lord, I pray that the individuals will confess that sin to you right now. I offer a collective confession. Forgive us. Forgive us. We have sinned. If we're honest, we have sinned. We've had conversations we shouldn't have had. We've been places in our thinking that we shouldn't have been. There's some things that just happened that weren't by accident that we should not have been a part of. And so, God, we ask that you would forgive us, Lord. Change us for your honor and for your glory. When conversations come up, help us to be open to hear the conversation, to hear the dialogue, to engage in the difficult dialogue, that we might win some. Oh, God, help us today. Help us today. And as we partake of this supper, Lord, make us ever mindful of the blood that was shed for us. Make us ever mindful of the body that was broken for us. May we never take it for granted. May we never take the cross for granted, but repeatedly yield before it. It is in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen and amen. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for mercy. Hallelujah. Let us break bread and drink wine as one body in the Lord Jesus Christ. The Bible says that when they concluded the supper, they sang a hymn and they went out into the Mount of Olives. We are leaving Mount Olive, those of us that are in the building anyway, and we will be going out into a world that needs to know the change can happen by the power of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen? That's the message that we carry, that there is a fountain. Amen? And that the sinner can plunge, just as we did, beneath the flood of the blood of Jesus and lose all of our guilty stains. And that we can become changed and new for the cause of Christ. God is at work. Amen? God is at work to those who will yield to His authority. I want to let you know before we close out today, I want to ask that you would please be in prayer for the family of our own deacon, Jeffrey Oliver, who passed away earlier this week. We have been in touch with his family, and there will be a memorial service that will be private. And so I'm asking on behalf of the family to please pray for them as their hearts are hurting, as we can all understand their hearts are hurting for their father, their grandfather, and for the man, Deacon Jeffrey Oliver, who was a faithful servant in this house until he became ill. And so we praise God for the legacy that he leaves behind from Mount Olive. Amen? Amen, amen. Let's pray. We're gonna pray for you. We're gonna pray for that family. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come once again, Lord. We can never come too many times to the throne of God. You know, you said men ought always to pray and not faint. And so we come before you today, thanking you for this time that we have shared together, thanking you for the questions that have come forward, for just the dialogue that has happened, Lord, and we pray that it has enriched the life of those who were with us today. God, we just lift up every person under the sound of my voice right now, Lord. We just pray for the needs of their life, Lord. But if they are unsaved, Lord, we pray for that need first, Lord. We pray that you would save folk today by the power of your Spirit, God, that you would just meet them at the point of their weakness and, and just draw them to the cross of Calvary that they might yield to the Lord Jesus Christ. God, we lift up the family of Deacon Jeffrey Oliver today. We just lift them up before you today. Lord, just the entire family. It's a large family, but we lift them all up, and they're in different places, Lord. But we just pray that even though they're in different places, you're an omnipresent God, and so you're everywhere, Lord, and that your Spirit would just take up residence in the homes of each one of those who are mourning right now, Lord, that you would just, they would feel your presence, that you would comfort them, that you would just hold them and let them know that daddy's with you and that daddy's in a good place right now, Lord. We just thank you for the life and the legacy of Deacon Jeffrey Oliver. We give you praise. We lift up David right now in the name of Jesus, his brother, whose heart is hurting as well, Lord. We just lift up the entire family, God, and we thank you for all that Jeffrey meant to us. And we lift up every family that's grieving right now. There are those who passed away weeks ago. Their loved ones passed away weeks ago, and they're still in a difficult place, Lord. So we lift them up before you, God, because we know you're a healer. We've been there. And so we know that you're a healer. And in due season, you mend broken hearts, God. So we just lift each one of those individuals up before you right now. Have your way in their lives, and if they're unsaved, use this experience to bring them to a place of yielding to the cross of Calvary, God. Thank you for hearing us today and for hearing your people every day, Lord, and causing us to know beyond the shadow of a doubt that you are at work on our behalf. We love you and we bless you in Jesus' name. Amen and amen. God bless you all, and God keep you. We'll be in touch, and in the meantime, we'll see you on next Sunday. Amen.